This conference will now be recorded.
So comparing that to the language in 6.1, 1.8, and also 6.1, 1.9, that the animal control officer will pick up stray animals, including cats. But that's specifically not under law. So are we... And I couldn't find any other city in Arizona or county that had stuff about that. So I'd just like to discuss that, maybe clarify it.
I'm concerned that you're talking about cats on their own, right?
I think that may be true. I think that may be true, that they're thinking about cats' own. But I agree with you, these sections aren't consistent with what you've just said about the state law.
Yeah, it's just not. I mean, it's not there. They're specifically out of the control of all that.
Yeah, which law is that? Do you have a reference?
I don't have the exact reference, but I saw it in many places. And I saw it under the Arizona Humane Society, under Maricopa County, Pima County. They all have links to it.
Okay, let's see. Arizona cat laws. Cat laws or feral cat laws, stray cat laws, pet laws?
Let's try cat laws and you'll come right to it. I'm sure.
Okay.
There'll be several references to it.
Okay, that's just a reference to state law. It's not... Okay, SB... Arizona feral cats are now protected in 2015. Okay, SB 1198. But that's not the actual law. Okay, but SB 188. Oh, wait a minute. Paste. No.
It's...
1198. All right. Arizona. Okay, SB 1198.
That's the feral cat one.
This also is addressing county. Establishment of county pounds impounding and disposing of dogs and cats. Reclaiming impounded dogs and cats and pound fees. So this regard is regarding counties, not cities.
Not state? This one, what I recall, state supersedes everything, county...
But this is the... But this state law applies to counties.
What does it say? Could you please read it?
Yes. Yep. Establishment of county pounds, impounding and disposing of dogs and cats. Reclaiming impounded dogs and cats and pound fees. SB 1198.
That sounds different than the law that Holly was speaking.
Yeah, I'm talking about a different law.
Okay. We need to figure out which law it is.
Okay, I'll look too. Might as well, I'll look.
I'm having trouble finding the exact statute.
Yeah, even where I'm finding feral cats are now protected, it still sends me to SB 1198.
Is it actually... Is the law Holly's speaking to about feral cats or just cats? Like, all cats or...
No. It's talking about... That's just cats. Cats as animals. And so the reason this caught my attention was not only, you know, that's a big deal, but also because in all the different towns and stuff that I looked for their statutes, none of, hardly any of them had anything on cats. They're all pertaining to dogs. And that's because of that free-roaming cat thing, I believe. And so, hold on, I'm just trying to find another source that I have here.
Okay.
Talks about feral cats from 2015, I'm finding that.
Mm-hmm.
To protect free-roaming cats. You're not allowed to torture, seriously injure, or kill them.
Oh, shoot, hold on. Let me... I have another way.
Yeah, I can't find anything on just cats, only the feral cats.
Mm-hmm.
And they're...
Okay, so...
Law.
Sorry. And keywords. Cats. The City of Chandler, I was there earlier on their website today.
Yeah.
A link to the Arizona... I have the Arizona Humane Society, which had a quote on that as well.
Is it like a...
Yeah, so I'm on Chandler's website right now. So it says, "With cats, as in the case for dogs, the City of Chandler adheres to those animal control laws adopted by Maricopa County. There are no leash..." Yeah, "There are no leash or license laws for cats and no agency pickup picks up stray or feral cat." This means the city doesn't have as many options to control them as they do other animals.
But that's Maricopa, so it doesn't even impact us, so...
Yeah. You know, and then it...
Well, I'm sorry that I didn't find the link to the statute, but I did see it in several places today. I...
Yeah.
Fortunately, I had it up. But that cats are considered free-ranging animals. And so even though I can't find it now, I think it's something that we definitely need to find out, if that's true, because if it is true, it really, you know, impacts...
According to the attorney, we can always make stricter laws, though, too.
Yeah, and even Maricopa County, in the Chandler description, says that you can trap cats and take them to the Humane Society. It's an... They sponsor programs that control the population of feral cats. The cats are sterilized, so they won't reproduce, and then they continue living outdoors. These groups are well-versed on where to get traps, how to use them, where to take the cats for sterilization, and what to do afterwards.
But we pretty much took all of that out, didn't we?
I got it right here, I think what she's talking about. Arizona law states that cats are free-roaming and there is no licensing, leash, or mandatory spay-neuter laws for cats. The issue of free-roaming cats is a property management issue and is no longer up to the local animal control municipality.
And what's the reference for that?
And I'm looking at it, though, I think that's what she's talking about.
Yeah.
The Foundation of Homeless Cats.
But it doesn't tell you...
Yeah, it's located on there as well.
Oh, that's Maricopa. That's Maricopa County Animal Care and Control System. And it's just in the narrative...
They're all up in Maricopa.
It doesn't show any actual statute. It just, you know, it just...
Right. Yeah.
Without any reference. So we got... Yeah.
"Any impounded cat that is eligible for a sterilization program and that will be returned to the vicinity where the cat was originally captured may be exempted from the mandatory holding period required by the subsection." Yeah, you know, it's saying that, but I'm not finding the actual statute.
Let's go on to talk about feral cats.
Okay.
And then we can go back, or we can get a clarification on that.
Yeah.
So my idea, if anyone's interested, is Phoenix has just... I think we can solve a lot of the problems. Phoenix has just adopted an animal hoarding ordinance. I don't see that anywhere addressed anywhere here. Does the City of Bisbee address animal hoarding? Is there an ordinance?
No, because we just... And also, we just stated there was no limit.
Yeah, well, but let me read this to you.
Okay.
"The City of Phoenix," this is from the Humane Society up there. "The City of Phoenix recently passed a new ordinance that imposes stiffer penalties for people convicted of hoarding animals. Individuals will now face a Class 1 misdemeanor if they're convicted of owning, possessing, keeping, harboring, or maintaining 10 or more animals under circumstances injurious to the health or welfare of any animal or person. Injurious can include unsanitary conditions, overcrowded, or inhumane conditions, failure to provide appropriate medical care, water or drink, or water or food." And it goes on, but if feral cats are an issue, wouldn't this address that?
No, because feral cats aren't hoarded cats. They're wild, at-large cats.
And I hear about animal hoarding, and it's a psychological illness. And like, you can find people, but that's not going to stop the behavior. The only time they've had actual success with this is with long-term intervention from social services.
Well, and... The City of Phoenix, in adopting this ordinance, is an enhancement of their prior ordinance. And this one says that you can mandate, they have to have a mental assessment, and that eventually, some of it gets down to someone can check on the facilities, they can enter the homes, and the person can be banned from having animals ultimately. So they have taken this one step further.
Okay.
But they do recognize it as an illness, but they also recognize that it may not stop the person from doing it. But they've taken extra steps to prevent people from continuing to do it. And it doesn't... I think it does meet the feral cats.
How?
Because it talks about harboring or maintaining 10 or more animals. It doesn't say that it... It says just animals. It doesn't say whether they're feral or anything else.
Yeah, but feral cats are...
And I think you could use wording like that.
Yeah, but feral cats are running around in the neighborhood. They're not being... They're not owned by a person. That's... I'm not fully getting the connection here.
This doesn't say anything about owning. It says, "or maintaining." If you're feeding feral cats, you're maintaining feral cats.
But there's lots of feral cats that are not being hoarded. There's like boroughs of them throughout Bisbee.
Well, then, I think we totally took out of the ordinance the TNR part of it. I don't see anything in here anymore addressing that.
No.
I'm really confused by that, because every organization that I went to in the counties, the different counties, the cities, the Animal Defense League of Arizona, the Foundation for Homeless Cats, the Arizona Humane Society, all suggest trap, neuter, and release. So I'm confused, why did we get rid of that?
Okay, I have like...
I feel the same way.
...research where... Because you're going to certain places where they're pushing an agenda. There's equally, if not more, where they're saying it doesn't work, and they actually have a lot of evidence, a lot of current places. I could even send it to you. The thing, okay, we have roughly 330 million people in this country. We have roughly 70 million stray or feral cats, at least. Some people say there's twice that amount, like 140 million. For every human being in the United States, or every five human beings, there's at least one feral cat running around. If you look at the city, we've got 5,200 people in the city. That means that we have at least 1,000 feral cats. And that, you know, the animal hoarders are just... Throughout the city. Now, if you try a TNR program for it to be successful, according to most scientists, you've got to get 90, over 90% of them spayed or neutered, all at the same time. You can't have a churn where you're only keeping 5% neutered, because some die. You have to get 90% of that rate. So that means that we would have to get 900 feral cats. And then release, and then, according to best practice, they should be taken care of. Otherwise, that's abandoned many, like, they should be a caretaker assigned to them. So if you have 1,000 cats, you're going to need what they probably need. Health and safety, or... Lots. Lots. No, you need, yeah, you need 100 people. Have three cats, eight... Need 100 people to do this release. 10 to 15 years, because those cats can live a long time when they're taken care of. And you have to give them shelter, food. I don't need TNR, it's like, like a bandage.
Excuse me, I can barely hear Leslie at all.
Me too.
Lot of difference.
She's great.
Maybe the rest of us can try muting and see if that helps.
Okay.
If you can mute yourself.
So if you look at the entire country, we have roughly 330 million people in the country. We have roughly 70 million to 140 million cats. If you do the math, that's basically for every five people, there's one or two... I mean, sorry, yeah, for every five people, you have one to two feral cats. We have in Bisbee... So if we're just going to use that ratio of one feral cat to five people, in the City of Bisbee, we have 5,200 people. That means that there's going to be 1,000 cats or more that are feral within the City of Bisbee. So if you want to actually have a successful TNR program, the research says you need to get 90% of them fixed. Otherwise, they're... Creating offspring offsets anything you could do by TNR. Because they're going to keep churning out those cats and adding to the population that can make more cats. So we would basically, at one point in time, have to have 90% of 1,000 cats, it's 900 cats, fixed at one time in a very, very short period of time. Otherwise, you're just like, you're just, you're doing a few cats here, a few cats there. They're being replaced by fertile cats. And then after those cats, the 900 cats, when you release them, you're supposed to have someone care for them. That's part of the community cat program. That means 1,000 cats, you're going to need roughly 100 people that are going to be dedicated to taking care of those cats for at least 10 years. And that includes all their food, all their vet care. I mean, that's a huge expense. To me, I don't even think we can... I think this is too big of a problem for Bisbee to handle. If you want to do TNR, it's never going to work. It's going to be an endless problem forever and ever and ever. You might be able to control a little bit on a street here or there, but we don't have 100, 200 people that are going to be wanting to do this for 10 years. And, you know, the funds to capture, like, 1,000 cats, you know, that's... It's just... It's, to me, this like, it needs to go to a state or a federal level. We don't have the kind of funds. That would be in the millions of dollars. I don't think our city can afford to do something like that. I don't think we have 100 or 200 volunteers willing to take care of feral cats for 10 years. To me, it's just like, it's just too big. We can't, we can't do it. A TNR program. Now, if you want to, like, stray feral cats, you want to adopt them, and those are your outdoor feral cats, go for it. You know, I think that if you want to save a few cats here and there and that... But it's not going to ever get rid of them in all of Bisbee. It's just not possible. That's why places like Australia and New Zealand have actually... They're eradicating them, because they understand the math is there. You can't... It's just too big. You can't do it. I would say, to me, the best idea is consider them wild. Just let them be wild and let wildlife management deal with them if they're sick. If you get like, a whole cluster of them sick, just like any kind of sick grouping of animal, they're going to go in and they'll take care of it. And if you want to, like, adopt some of them, because I know some people are really attached to them, just go ahead and adopt them. But, you know, we can't force the whole community to be subject to, like, unaccountable cats. Like, cats that are sick, running around, getting other cats sick, running around, getting people's pets sick. They actually pass diseases to humans, like ringworm. I don't know what else to say. It's just too big of a problem.
Well, and I have some questions for you. First of all, you said that what Holly reported was pushing the agenda. I feel like what you're saying is pushing the agenda. So I want to know who went out and counted all the feral cats and came up with all these statistics, and why those are more important than the people that Holly quoted.
I'm not saying that she's not... Now, she's saying that they, it works, right?
Yes.
It's all based off of a what?
I'm saying...
Study from 2003, where in Florida, they had colonies where they had a full-time vet and staff, and it was a wealthy community that could afford that. And after 15 years, 15 years, they eventually got it under control. We're not like that community. We can't hire a full-time vet. We can't have a full-time staff dedicated just to feral cats. If you look, I can send you tons of research.
Well, I can send you tons of research on the other side, so I think we're kind of at a standoff there.
Current and valid, and you have to look at how they're performing it, and what is their standards?
Ladies, in our last meeting, we each said, "What do they do in other places?" So where I looked was other places in Arizona. I didn't look at Florida. I didn't look at anywhere else. I just did Arizona. And so I focused on what these large organizations are recommending in Arizona right now. That was the genesis, and that's where I'm getting my information. So maybe there is other information that in other places it didn't work, or whatever. But it seems kind of overwhelming that if all these places in Arizona are suggesting the same thing, and we're a little town of 5,000 people, why would we reinvent something else that's working apparently all over Arizona?
There's a ton of organizations that also disagree, that are like the wildlife, the bird one, the bird wildlife. I mean, there's a lot where they do not support this. In fact, PetSmart dropped TNR programs, because they used to support it and fund it, because it's showing that it's not, it's not working. It's like, very popular, but it's not, it's not working. If you have data, you need data to show that it actually works. What they're seeing is that shelters is...
So you really, seriously?
It's getting swept under the rug. It's like, of course, there's less cats being killed at the shelters, because they're just throwing them outside. This...
I'm having trouble believing that all these different places, much larger than us, with a much bigger feral cat population in our state, are just completely off-base. And also question, I'm really trying to understand where you're going, Leslie, with this... Wait, could I finish? Could I finish my question? I'm confused, because on one hand, you're saying, "We don't have the resource. We can't do anything. We just need to ignore it." On the other hand, you're saying, "Oh, we can't ignore it. It's such a big problem in Bisbee." So... So I'm just very unclear on what you're suggesting.
It's just too big of a problem. TNR isn't going to help it. It just isn't. It's just a simple frickin' fact. It can't help it.
That's your opinion.
I'd like to know which communities where it is helping, and can you tell me which ones they are, and how they've collected their data?
Maricopa County and Pima County.
Are they saying it's working? Or are they just trying it right now?
Well, since that's what they've adopted, and that's what they're suggesting, they think, they obviously think it's working.
Do you have a link on that, so I can see it, maybe? And what I'm saying is...
No, I don't have the link right now. You're just going to have to take my word for it and look it up yourself, because I spent a lot of time looking at these, these different, the animal control laws in different places. Because again, going back to what we said, what are they doing in other places? And that's what they're doing. And most towns, I looked at other towns our size, I looked at Thatcher. They just give it over to the county in those places. Maybe they don't have very much of a feral cat population in those places. It's not a big deal, I don't know. But all of these organizations, which I previously mentioned, I won't repeat again, all are in favor of trap, neuter, and release. And since we have nothing else going for us here, I think it's something that we might at least consider. Because along with trap, neuter, and release, you also have to capture baby kittens and have them go through the adoption process.
I understand what you're saying.
In addition, just one last thing I'd like to say about that 10-year figure for wild cats, for feral cats. Remember last week how we talked quite a bit about diseases that cats have? Feline leukemia, feline distemper? These are both fatal illnesses in cats that sweep through cat populations on a regular basis. And right here in Bisbee, I've dealt with it. It means that people who have privately owned cats need to be very careful with their vaccinations and keep up with it. But it also means that it helps to limit wild populations of cats. So I'm not sure that I'm on board with your 10-year...
Okay, so what I'm saying is it's too large. I don't think we should be spending money on TNR. I think if people want to take some feral cats and take care of them on their own, do it. But otherwise, making the city responsible for a TNR program, I think it's not going to work. Actually, the city already tried it, like Teresa said. And only like, two or three people, like, since it passed three years ago, even tried to do it. So that's not enough. It's not working. We already tried it. It'll work probably for their one street. We would need the whole town to actually do this.
If the city already has a trap, neuter, and release program, and it's only been taken advantage of by what you're saying, two to three people in three years, then that tells me...
Yeah, I'm sorry, Holly. It was a colony cat giver program, which included, which included TNR and capturing kittens, and the colony caregiver program. It was only like, one or two folks who were willing to take on that responsibility.
I think maybe some public announcements to make sure everybody knows about that. Because if you think about it, if you have a program like that, if I lived in a neighborhood where cats were really terrorizing the neighborhood, I would think that people would actually take action instead of just sweeping in under the carpet and saying... I mean, after a certain point, isn't that logical? That anyone would want to... That, that anyone would want to take some kind of action if it was bothering them enough? So that either it's not being education, uh, there's not enough education about the availability and the health it'll do, or it's not that much of a problem. It can't, it doesn't seemingly be able to be both ways.
I think they have plenty of opportunity. And there's a lot of people that have actually been pushing TNR program in our, in our city already. And this is what we got. We got a few people that are doing it in that city. Personally, I don't want to take care, I've got tons of feral cats. I don't even want to take care of one of them. I already got my, my pets. I don't want to take care of wild cats. You know, like to me, let the, just, you know, let them be, consider them a wild animal, just like a raccoon or a squirrel. They're living out there and they're just going to have to adapt unless we come up with a statewide or federal policy on dealing with them. There's too much contention, controversy around it. People, people like, God, what, one of the boroughs and what they do. You just, you know, what, around like, you know, to keep them out of your yard. That's what they're doing.
And I spoke with the shelter today and talked to them about the TNR program, just as an individual, asking questions. And they're very cooperative. They will, I told you in our neighborhood, we did trapping and, and they want you to help them with their, with the times that they take animals for spaying and neutering, that sort of thing. But they were very cooperative, very, really wanted to work with that. And it sounds like, and they always have been, as far as I understand. Um, and, and I don't understand why, I, I'm with Holly. I think it, it seems to be working in certain places. And I know you've got facts and figures from around the country, but I think it's working. And, and when you talk about, um, feral cats, I, I looked at our ordinance and it says it's okay to feed birds. Well, I have friends that say neighbors feed birds and they have a mouse infest, infestation because of that. So I mean, we could go there with everything.
Can I, can I say something?
On it, you know, and there isn't any communities where it's actually really helped. If you look at it, just look, see what their standard is for it helping. Like on my street, instead of having 15, I have 10 cats. That's not, that's, you're still have 10 cats running around defecating. You're, you know, peeing all over the place, killing wildlife. And that's only one little street. You know, what about, I think it's really an awful. On my street, where I was not consulted and I was just, I was good, TNR program. No one was allowed to feed them and no one was taking care of them. And no one, there was no accountability. There's just still running around, being sick and no one, you know, there's no, I can't say you need to take care of your cat. That's your cat. You know, it, it's getting my animals sick. No one is being responsible for the cats.
Well, and that's where, when I spoke to the shelter, one of the things they talked about and why I went to the animal hoarding, which I still think could be made into something that works. They said they felt, for instance, in Brof, on Brofie, where there is obviously a big problem that the individual, that the city doesn't go into the home where there's certain, there are animals living in there and that sort of thing. There, I think there's more enforcement needed for the really serious problem areas. But the other areas, I think the TNR, I believe it's working.
Um, do you guys hear me?
Believe, but you don't know. You have to actually have data points.
Um, hello?
I can't hear you, Holly.
Can you, can you hear me? Caller one has been trying to get into this conversation. Could we acknowledge caller one?
Caller one is Joanie. Um, and I just wanted to make a statement about your comments on the, the hoarding situation. She's referring to Brofie and Brofie is an extreme situation. We have colonies in my neighborhood that aren't that bad. There's colonies on Cochise Road that have actually been decreased because of the tr- trapping and neutering and release. So, um, you know, it, we're, we have very unique situations in Bisbee when it comes to the animal colonies, you know, like the cat colonies. And you know, what, what's the other choice? Does everybody just want to go out and kill the cats? I mean, that's pretty much our only other choice. Is that what we're going to do?
I was saying just.
And that, that never proved a workable solution in any situation outside where you kill every living animal, like in Australia, what they did with rabbits, which is now threatening the entire world's rabbit population.
No, I under, I understand that. I feed the cats in my neighborhood. I mean, so I'm probably, here I am again, outing myself as one of the cat feeders. And I've taken them in and I've gotten them spayed and I've gotten some of them neutered. But it's, um, it, that type of, um, of action that has to happen to decrease these populations because they're not going to go away. And you know, we can throw all the data we want out there, but every place is unique. You know, and some people say, oh, it kills the wildlife. If you don't feed them, they're going to kill more wildlife. And that's been proven, you know? So I don't know.
And the other thing is that along with killing wildlife, they kill a tremendous amount of rodents.
Exactly. And I mean, that's why, one of the reasons I don't mind feral cats around my house because they're killing the pack rat and the mice problems that occur.
I totally agree with that.
They're killing rodents that are also protected under Arizona law. There is definitely.
What rodents are protected under Arizona law?
I'll, I'll find it for you.
The rodents that they're killing, yeah, please do, because the ones that are killing in my house, I know they're not protected.
I hope pack rats aren't protected.
No, and they carry, they also carry hanta and they also carry bubonic. So I mean, you know, I, I look at the, same with the other side of the coin. But I don't know. But again, you know.
That's why there's been an over 9,000 year.
So I'm just wondering, like, given the uniqueness of the neighborhoods, is it necessary, um, to have something written into the ordinance? Or can it be for the neighborhoods to tackle?
To be honest, Teresa, the main neighborhood that is catching all the flack is Brofie. Um, I mean, everybody else has them, but have you really heard any complaints um, from the other neighborhoods that being overinfested? You know?
Personally, we're having all those complaints because the, the head of the Bisbee Animal Shelter lives on this street. If she didn't live there, it'd probably be like any other street.
Well, I, I disagree with that from what I heard from the shelter. They, they were complaining about Brofie. And that's why I went to the hoarding, because they felt that animal hoarding might address the specific issue on Brofie, not feral cats in general, but that specific issue where you've got one individual who's, who is definitely doing that.
So we can't write rules for one person, for the whole city.
Well, you can use it in other areas if the same thing occurs.
Leslie, I have a question for you.
I, I just, I just think the only reason why it's become such a thing is because we have, uh, someone that is so into TNR and is in charge of the animal shelter and the, and she's living right across the street from him. If she lives somewhere else, I bet it wouldn't even be a problem, like compared to other street. I mean, I think.
No, I, I think.
I disagree. Yeah.
Leslie, I have a question.
The, um, if the animal shelter person moved, you, does that mean all the cats are going to go away? Is that what you're saying?
That doesn't, no, not at all. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying it wouldn't be a problem because we wouldn't hear so much, um, noise about it or complaints. It's, it's really, it's really because of her.
I disagree with that.
Yeah, I totally disagree with all the complaints that have been filed.
I lived there for almost five years now.
I still disagree.
Yeah.
Leslie, what's the current trap, neuter and release? Is there any funding for that? Or what's, what's the current policy? Catch me up, will you?
You know, I've never been talked to about it personally. It's just been going on without even, like, if best practices, if you're going to do something like this, you should be talking to your neighbors and getting them on board with it and be working with them. You don't force them into it. You don't release sick cats back out that are fixed. You just don't do those things.
I think Joanie is a good idea of how it is, a, a good example of how it is happening or it's individuals stepping in, stepping up and, and participating in the program.
And, and Leslie, is that program still ongoing with the city? Can you tell me about that?
Oh, well, I think probably Teresa knows about that. I haven't, I don't know about it because I haven't actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I thought I was saying Teresa, sorry. Sorry, Teresa, if I said. That's what I'm trying to get to.
So, um, so other than the individuals who are, we had one city-involved trapping, uh, experience. Was it early in the spring, Leslie?
Uh, I think it was last year. It was like last summer, like around.
Last summer already? Oh, my gosh.
About a year ago. And so ACO came in there and captured, she told me 23 cats. The, um, shelter said there was 16 cats. So I don't know what happened to the, the seven cats that didn't make it to the shelter, but that they were fixed. They were there for about two or three days and then released on the street again, with no one to take care of them and some of them still had IUD disease and probably other diseases.
Have you, um, looked into the shelter manager, Teresa? Have you even accessed that?
Uh, no, no.
But you should because that shows you every animal that's been treated, how long they've been treated and what they've been treated for.
Like even the ones that you.
Even any animal that, yes, any animal that comes in the shelter is logged in there. It's what they spend their money on, what animals have been trapped, neutered and released, which ones have been treated for infection and how long that their stay was at the shelter. And, um, Ashley, I believe has the, uh.
She does not. She does not.
Well, you can get it from Kelly because Kelly will be more than happy to give it to you. Because I've seen it before. Um, I asked to see it and she opened it for me and it's a play-by-play. You know how you get the, the report that just gives you numbers?
Yeah.
You can go into the shelter manager and the office is supposed to have the password and everything to it. So you might ask.
Yeah, they don't. They don't. I, I asked.
Okay, well, then I'll, I'll let Kelly know. But when you open it, it will show you who the person is that brought it, when they brought it in, what was done to the animal, how long they were treated and what the cost was. And it will show those animals that have been treated with infection, um, that are held sometimes up to 10 days at the shelter. So, uh, it's a very in-depth report, um, as to what animals are treated at the shelter. And as, you know, as far as feral cats, you can't, you know, this discussion came up. How are you going to say, okay, now I got these cats fated, so now they're my responsibility? Or do I just let them mass produce? I mean, I put out my personal money. No, this is just a, I mean, a question. Am I just going to put out my own personal money and, um, get these animals spayed, which I don't mind doing? Or do I let them mass produce in my neighborhood and sit back and complain about it? Or there's that extreme case that I don't agree with and that's killing them. You know, they're eventually going to die, the feral cats are. I mean, that's just the circle of life. But if we can stop the population, I mean, that's a much better situation.
This is going to be an ever-ending battle. In 10 years, we'll have the same conversation if you do a TNR program. Because the cats that are not fixed, there's too many of them. There is just way too many. They're going to keep reproducing. The other thing is.
In some areas.
No.
In some areas, like Brofie.
Like, if, yeah, if you want to, like, say, a couple of streets where you actually have everyone on the neighborhood, like really lockstep on, you know, treating this, then you're probably, that street will be safe. But they've also done studies where TNR, because it takes away their hormones, that cats from other places or from outside of there come in because they, they have the right hormones. Like if you're going to do it, you're supposed to leave their hormones intact and just, uh, clip them basically and, and leave things there so that they can still spray and, um, protect their territory like that. Otherwise, the, the wild, other wild cats will come in.
Well, I know in my neighborhood where we've done this, we haven't had, the other cats haven't come in. We reduced the population significantly. The ones that have been spayed and neutered, there are no tomcats spraying. We had a massive number of tomcats spraying. And now the females that have been spayed and the people, the neighbors who are feeding, watering and providing housing for these animals, they're healthy. And they're doing what Joanie said. They're providing rodent control, which I truly appreciate.
But they're also killing lizards and birds too. I mean, there's just proof, there's proof of that. There, it's not like a theoretical thing. This actually happens. They are killing all sorts of stuff, not just only the pests you don't like.
Well, there are other things that kill birds and lizards too. So I'm not sure, should we get rid of all of those too? I mean, I just, I don't find that as adequate.
I think the question is, is this something that we write into ordinance?
In what way?
I think, I think you're going to have to kind of work, Teresa, because, you know, on one side of the coin, we're saying you can only have, you know, you, your cats have to be controlled. But then we're saying, I'm just repeating, so if I'm wrong, correct me, that if you're, if there's feral cats out there and you take responsibility, now you have to take control of them, but they're not feral anymore. Now they become like my pet. But how do I have a wild animal for a pet? I mean, it's kind of a, well, that's, that's what was said, you know? I mean, it, so I'm not going to let a cat starve. I'm sorry. I'm not going to let any animal starve. And if I've got wild cats, I'll trap them. And the fact is, if you ask the shelter, they will lend you traps. I have my own, so I haven't had to, but my, yeah, right.
Okay, did you look up the, um, humane shelter's best practices for community cats? Does, has anyone looked at that? Because if you look at it and you actually follow it, you never release a cat unless someone is going to take responsibility for it. And that includes vet care, feeding and shelter. It's not, you just throw them out there afterwards. That is definitely.
So what do you do with the, the wild cats that are trapped? What are you going to do with them?
Trapped them, then they need to be, someone, you're going to be trapping them because someone wants to be the community cat person for that.
No, you're going to be trapping them to get them out of the neighborhood. So that's, therein lies the problem. Where are they going to go? You can't.
Why would you trap them?
Don't trap them, is that what she said?
Yeah, don't trap them unless you're going to take care of them.
Then they're just going to reproduce.
No, that's.
They're already doing that. They're already doing it. If you just can't release cats in a neighborhood and not take care of them, that's not responsible. It's just not responsible. There's no.
I don't see the difference between that.
Only cats. You can't go around, you know, just doing that with dogs.
How is it not responsible to do something that stops an animal from reproducing and causing more of a problem in your neighborhood? Why is that more of a problem?
Didn't say that part.
And releasing it back where it was than just ignoring it? I'm not understanding, Leslie, at all, not at all.
So look at the humane shelter's best practices. You're, you know what a community, um, cat care is supposed to do? Do you know what they're supposed to do?
Well, I'm not on board with the community cat care situation. What I'm trying to say is that you're equating that anyone who traps a cat and takes it in to be neutered automatically becomes its owner. And I, I don't agree with you. That's not true. That shouldn't be right.
It's just like everyone wants to have their.
Yeah.
Too. You want, but you don't want to be, you don't want to actually be responsible for the, the problem. You just want to like, oh, I'll fix them and I'll feed them when I feel like it, if they're sick, whatever.
No, I'm not suggesting feeding them. You're putting words in my mouth. And, and Leslie, why is that a worse option than what you're currently saying is, well, we'll just ignore this because we just can't do anything at all. So we'll just wait and it'll get worse and then a bigger government will come and they'll make a law and take care of it. I don't agree with that. This is a, a problem that we need to deal with, um, on a grassroots level in our community. And both Janet and, um, um, what everybody's saying in the places that they've looked at in town where they've lived, where they've done it, it's worked out really well. So again, I'm really confused about why you are not in favor of us doing at least something to mitigate this problem.
So what, what is your, when you say it works out really well, please explain what that means.
There's less cats.
Like how many did you start with and how many do you have now?
Obviously, I don't have that kind of statistics. We're talking about what we're observing in our community. This isn't a research project here. We're just real people trying to deal with a problem in our community in a logical way.
I don't think that's logical when you just said it worked out real well and you don't have. I don't think that's logical when you just said it worked out real well and you don't have any way to describe what well means.
Well, I'll tell you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bring us back. Yeah, bring us back to the ordinance. If we, if we took out 6.1.8, the feeding of feral animals, then we wouldn't be including feral cats. And the feeding of wildlife is covered in 6.4.2. So the birds and tree squirrels are covered there.
Teresa?
Yes.
Can I, can I interject for something? One of the real issues as far as feeding wildlife is the javelina. That's the main issue.
Okay.
Because they're, they're coming into the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah. They ate my pumpkin. They ate my pumpkin plant last night.
Oh, they'll eat you. No, I mean, they're, they're, and they're very aggressive. They'll tear dogs up. They'll, and they're very dangerous. Yeah. And unfortunately, there's people in the neighborhoods that just think they're cute and cuddly and they're not.
Yeah.
So I think that's, you know.
That's covered in 6.4.2.
Okay.
With the exception of tree squirrels and birds and wildlife management, I think where we're getting caught up is the feral cats, which I think by association are feral animals in 6.1.8. And we could take that section out and then would not be making that association there.
And again, at the end, you already have the feeding of the tree squirrels and birds.
Right, right.
It's like you're, you're doing it twice, so you don't need to.
Right. Does that make sense?
It does to me.
Okay. And then, um.
What's that number?
Uh, it was 6.1.8 maybe?
Yes.
So that was the, that was the, um, feral animals, which kind of brought up the whole feral cat discussion. So then, at that point, you know, we kind of have a clean slate. Do we want to encourage the neighborhoods to work with animal rescue organizations to control cat overpopulation and leave it at that? Uh, because it sounds like each neighborhood has their own issues or not.
Um, one of the issues.
I say yes.
Oh, okay. One of the questions that was brought up to me about this was the enforcement. You know, those neighborhoods where it's working okay, where it's not, people aren't really complaining, that the people are stepping up in, they're not really having that major complaint because it's kind of being taken care of. But when you have these extreme neighborhoods, the question was, for an extreme neighborhood, who is enforcing this to make it get under control? And that was a question I was asked and I didn't have an answer.
No.
So doesn't that become a health issue? Isn't it a health issue?
Every cat should be attached to a person. They should be chipped. And someone's got to be accountable for them. Because right now I'm running, we've got like a, a bunch of cats running around that are sick looking. So they're fixed, but they're sick. And if I had someone that I could say, okay, you release, you know, that's the cat that you brought in or whatever, and you're going to, that's a sick cat. Please take care of your cat. Don't make that a sick cat that's running around making every other cat sick and my pet sick. I don't like that.
Right.
Someone's got to be accountable for that. If it was, um, treated like a wild, like wildlife, then animal control or whatever, wildlife management could come in there and probably kill the cat or, but we have sick cats on the street. Their eyes are all fucked up. It's. And they're fixed.
I'd like a legal clarification about where cats, feral cats fall under the wildlife or law or whatever. I think that would be very helpful for us. Until we know that, I, it's kind of hard to move forward.
Like every single country with feral cats. Because there is no, they, they, they're kind of like, you're not allowed to hurt them, that's all. That's all it says in the Arizona statutes. You can look it up. You're not allowed to injure, hurt or kill them. That's it. Doesn't say anything else. Doesn't say you can feed them or you can't feed them or.
Yeah, I have, so, so here's where we're at. How are we going to move forward with this ordinance? Um, so we do talk about complaints of cats at large under 6.3.2. That if there is a complaint, the ACO can pick up the cat.
But then what happens to the cat? It goes back to the shelter and then back on my street?
Uh, well, we go, right, it'll go to a rescue organization.
And then it goes right back on the street, right? So it's like a, it's just putting money into something that is.
Well, I don't think it necessarily goes back on the street.
Is that they're sick cats. There's no one that's, is, is accountable for them. And I, and you can't hurt them because they're a TNR program. You can't, like, capture.
I'm sorry.
I think that's the thing that bothers me the most is the, the, the not being accountable. There's sick cats on my street. No one's going to, they're, no one's taking care of them. Like, they're sick. And they're, they're, they're a health hazard. They're a health hazard for all.
So then is there a state?
All the animals.
Is there a state law concerning health and safety issues that might apply to sick cats on the street?
I think, I, I don't know, Joanie, correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's the state solution maybe that hasn't been, acceptable. Like, if we called in a state agency.
They'd probably kill it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's the thing. They, there is a guy. And I'm, and I'm not, don't, don't misread me on what I'm saying. I am not for it, but there is a gentleman that the county, the state and the city has utilized in the past. He comes in the dark of night, sets up his traps and if your little pet Fluffy happens to be out that night, Fluffy's on because he traps everything and he disposes of them, not for a better term. Um, and he'll clear out the neighborhood. But, you know, it's, it's not what we want. I personally don't like that. I don't want him coming in my neighborhood and taking the feral cats because I don't have a problem. My neighbor doesn't have a problem because he's got a big garage and he likes the rodent control. You know, so again, thi- this is actually a circular thing on Brophy. Because I, I would like to hear who else has complained in the other neighborhoods because when they had the big meeting, it was about Brophy. And Brophy is what got this whole mess started. It's the fact that there is no control on Brophy. You know, I mean, you, Teresa came in the middle of it.
Is the one who's been, like, rallying people against Ron on our neighborhood. She's been doing it, like, endlessly for years.
Kelly isn't mass producing cats up there. The cats.
No one would actually really care that much. We'd probably take them.
Well, I beg to differ with you on that because there's quite a few people on Brophy that are tired of cats and one of them is Ron's neighbor. Um, you know.
Ron's neighbor is Jane and she is a very sweet person. She loves Ron and she would say, yeah, maybe there should be less cats, but it really doesn't bother her. Lisa Alderson moved. She's not there, if that's who you're talking about. But Jane's a sweet lady. She thinks that Ron should have his cats and just leave it alone. You know, maybe not.
Oh, okay. Back to your taking care of cats. He isn't taking care of his because they aren't neutered and spayed.
I don't know which one for her, his. That's what I'm saying, the accountability. Now, if he claims some cats and they were chipped, and I could say that's your cat, but we're playing shell games at this point. That's why I would like every TNR cat to be somehow connected to a person and chipped. So if it's caught or it's sick, maybe the, the, maybe it's just simple, like, okay, um, that cat's really sick. I don't want to deal with it anymore. Please put it down. Or maybe it's like, yeah, I'm going to take care of the vet bills for that cat because it's sick. But they shouldn't be allowed to be running around sick and someone's got to be accountable for them. And they are TNR cats. They're, got their ears in a clip. You can go look at them. Just walk down the street, look at them. I don't want to touch any of them. They're probably got other diseases too. Because they just, you know, even if you treat it, it's just going to come right back because another cat's sick and it's just going to give it back. It's just like, it's just, it's a merry-go-round with, with sickness.
So this is a specific place and a specific problem that needs to be addressed. And I don't know that making a general statement that everyone has to, to chip and the feral cat that they're feeding, um, fits. As Joanie said, certain neighborhoods, it's not an issue at all. People like having the feral cats. But this is an area that has a specific problem that there has to be some way to address that.
I don't know how, like, um, to me, sick animals running around is not allowed. That's like against Arizona statutes. That is definitely against it. You shouldn't have sick animals running around. Now, if.
Then there's, if it's against the statutes, then there should be a person who enforces it. Who is that person?
Exactly. It's probably going to be USDA, whatever, Wildlife Management, probably go in there and zap them. But if it's a TNR cat, you know, it, what if, you know, I, I just think if the, the cats are chipped and someone is accountable, then at least they could have a say on it. Say, no, I, I, um, can't take care of that cat or I want to take care of it. Please don't, don't kill it, you know? I'd like people to have some choice in the matter, but I don't like a bunch of cats running around. No one owns them and you can't do anything about it. Even if they're fixed.
You start telling people they have to be responsible for, um, spaying and neutering animals that aren't even theirs, but now it's yours because you spayed and neutered it. Those cats aren't going to get spayed and neutered anymore. Um, people do it to stop the population. That's why they do it. They don't do it because they want to gain a new pet. I do it in my neighborhood because I don't want to see more kittens.
So as soon as, let's say you're really into it and you do it on your street and then you get too old and you can't take care of them anymore or you die or you move, then you've got a, it's just going to be the same problem. It's just going to come right back in and be exactly the same problem. It's never going to.
Leslie.
Never going to end. It's, it's, there's endless cats being.
We're going nowhere with this.
Exactly. So what I want.
Teresa, can you find a way to move on? Seriously?
Well, Teresa, so if we do away with 6.1.8, we take out that feeding of feral animals question completely. And then we're left with 6.3.2, which is the complaints of cats at large, which does refer to, um, law enforcement or the ACO may pick up a cat when they suspect the cat is at large or the cat is feral. Um, when the cat owner can be identified, the owner will be counseled, may be cited for failing to control. I'm going to say their cat. Then we could have a paragraph more specific to, like, uh, if the cat is, or when the cat is feral. Uh, maybe we should say cat or kittens?
I think cat covers any age of cat.
Okay, okay. So when the cat is feral, what do we want to do? Do we want the, the neighborhood can, uh, im- implement?
How about we don't say anything because they can just do that regardless? You don't need a.
Okay.
Or anything. That's fine. Just.
Okay. Well, then we don't need it. Okay. So essentially, we're leaving feral cats to the neighborhoods.
The one thing I don't like is, again, how, how, does someone have a suggestion on how to deal with sick TNR cats that are running around?
Have you asked the shelter people that question?
Well, she's living on the street and they're roaming around. She hasn't done anything about it.
Well, but have you asked, have you asked someone specifically? And that's not a good enough answer that she lives on the street. Have you asked someone specifically?
No, I have not asked her about it, no.
I'm not talking about her or anybody at the shelter.
Not, have not asked the shelter because they're not the city, they're the shelter. Like, is, we're looking at ordinances, right?
Mm-hmm.
We're looking at ordinances, but they're the ones who have been doing the TNR program. So if animals are re-released, I would at least bother to call the shelter and say, okay, you've re-released these animals. They're sick. Do you have any suggestions? Is there anything you do?
For sick cats. So.
Yes.
So, so basically, don't put anything in the ordinances that if the, how about if the, the TNR cats are sick? If they're part of the city, I mean, if, if this is, it's not a city program though.
Right.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, it has been city-supported. It may not be a direct city program, but it has been city-supported, which, um, it should be considering it's taking care of the city's problem. You know, it.
No, I don't, I personally don't feel comfortable going to the shelter and making that my go-to for the animals. Like, I think that that is, like, that organization, to me, is a bit fanatic on TNR and I don't really, I don't agree with it. I'm not, I don't want to go to them. I think that there should be some, someone else or some other entity or some sort of ordinance for this.
Well, there, there are other options in the counties. So there is Cochise County Humane Society, for example.
Okay. There's some people that are just poisoning them or hitting them with cars or shooting them with arrows, you know? I'm not like that and I would never be like that. But, you know, there's a lot of people that don't agree with the TNR program, but they're, they're not here speaking. What they're doing is, uh, I heard one lady's taking them to Benson or Wilcox, Wilcox, capturing them and then driving over to Wilcox and releasing them, which is illegal.
Ew.
There's people, you know, killing them. Some, some have had their.
That's very responsible.
You know, but there's a lot of people that don't agree with this, but they're not the one, you're not hearing from them. And they're taking care of it in their own way. I would like a nice solution where we don't have these people that are like so gung-hoed, TNR from the shelter, because that, to me, that's politically motivated. And then you have your people that are taking care of it all kind of crazy. I'm not on either side of that. I would like something that's a reasonable solution for someone living in there, in there that is not pro-TNR, because I'm just, the science is against it. But that there's a way to take care of these TNR cats. Uh, that, that's the accountability piece. No one's, no one's, no one's coming to the plate and actually accounting. I would like some kind of option.
Yeah. So we may not. So we may not identify that for this section of the ordinance. Um. Yeah. So we may not identify that for this section of the ordinance. It seems to be a much bigger, like, separate issue.
Entity, entity.
I said issue.
Become an entity of itself.
Yeah.
I don't want to be.
Yeah. So, um, were there, were there any, um, does there any discussion regarding the changes that you saw in here? Because honestly, we just did the best we could with the notes that I took, um, at your last meeting.
I didn't have a question on those, but I did have a question. In the old ordinance, there was a, it used to be 6.1.3. It was called maintaining swine. They said it was unlawful to keep swine. Let me see.
Right.
Big hogs or swine. And I don't see that in there anymore. So have we changed?
Right.
Where did that go?
Well, if they would be, I think, are they lumped under livestock in here?
Okay. And livestock, isn't livestock, the maintenance of livestock within the city limits, isn't that, um, controlled by zoning?
No, um, that was going to be the discussion about the, um, uh, size, which I did insert something in here. Let's see. Livestock. There was like, uh, uh, if you look at 6.1.25B, um, we had talked about how much area do you need? And I had picked. And I had picked up this, uh, 10,000 square feet in area. Um, but that's totally up for discussion. Yeah, that's totally up for discussion. I just
Yeah. I did some research on that. Uh, I did some research on that.
I picked it up, uh, I think doing the same thing Holly did, looking around the state and seeing what some of the requirements were. And so I just picked it up there. It doesn't mean that it's like in stone. It is, um, kind of a placeholder for us to talk about that.
I think
Yeah, the, when I did research this week, the stuff that I looked up, chickens were like 25 square feet tops per chicken. Um, alpacas were a few hundred square feet, um, per animal, same with goats.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we definitely did not get into the thousands of feet for those animals and anything that I saw. And I don't have the exact references. I can get them for you.
Um, well, I was trying to make it like as simple as possible.
I think we should put a little more detail, because 10,000 feet is bigger than most lots in Bisbee, and that's
Okay.
Yeah.
People will not be happy with that.
Okay.
Yeah. The recommendation is for animals.
So, so you said something about 200 to 300 square feet for an alpaca? Is that what you said? To maintain one?
A few hundred square feet. Yeah, yeah.
I think that
I think that's crazy.
What, what? I think dividing it by the animal type.
Because I was actually in a discussion with a neighbor about it, and I was saying that it must be much higher. And when we looked it up, I was like, holy. So I would be happy to get those exact figures based on, um, different universities and things like that and provide them for you. But I'm thinking that 10,000 square feet is way out of line.
I agree.
See, I'm thinking it's wonderful. So, and I'm, I'm a former livestock owner, so I don't want to see them in town in these tiny, our Tombstone Canyon, I don't want to see llamas and alpacas and sheep and goats on those city lots. I, it's so unfair to the animals.
How about chickens and rabbits?
It really is.
Chickens and rabbits and
They're much smaller. And, and are they considered, are they considered livestock?
No, on fowl, um, you know, I picked this up that, um, they may be kept on a lot or parcel less than 10,000 square feet if written permission consenting to the keeping of poultry on such lot or parcel is first obtained from all of the lawful occupants and owners of the adjoining lots and parcels. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And Joni, you're, you're a livestock owner. What, what is your opinion on livestock in the city?
Um, I have a real issue with, um, the issue I have with livestock is that people have a tendency to go overboard. And, you know, I know a lot of people want to sustain themselves on eggs and that, but you know, when you're in a small yard, or even a, even a yard that's 30 by 40 feet, you got to think about your neighbor, and before that, you got to think about the animal. Because, you know, they're putting these little guys in some really tight areas, and it's not fair to the animal. You know, I don't know. That's just how I feel. You know?
I, I feel, I, I feel exactly the same way. And I, an example is the burrows on Tombstone Canyon Road. They're in a former garage. The woman walks them. Burrows should be out in pasture and be able to run.
Yeah.
They had a little corral, actually, for them, and that's, and then she still walked them.
And that's not, that's not adequate for livestock. I'm sorry. In my opinion.
There's going to be, I'm going to tell you, there's going to be a lot of people upset that you're, we're not going to be allowed to do stuff like that. Because there was, it was quite vocal. A lot of people wanted, they, they said, especially Bisbee, because it character, and that they would like, they want to have urban farming or, I don't know if you want to call it suburban, but they want to have those type of animals. They want to have, to be able to do that. They want to have their chickens. They want to have, whatever. They, you know, I personally don't want to keep any, but you know, if, if other people want to, I don't really care as long as it, they're, it's sanitary and they're not making so much racket. I'm
But do you care about the animals? That's, that's my question. Animals need space and room, and people, if you talk to the rescue groups, I mean, that's, they will tell you so many times, people in urban areas decide they want goats, they want all these things, and isn't it fun? And I want to teach my kids. Well, my feeling is if you want those, move to an area that's more appropriate. But in town, it's really hard on the animals in those conditions.
There's a huge difference, though, between chickens and equine.
Absolutely, absolutely. Now, chickens, rabbits, that's a different thing.
They can be taken care of really well if they have a, a little bit of, of land. They don't need that much, depending on the size of the animals. And I, I think it's, I think you can do it. I, I lived up in Tucson. People had chickens, and it looked like to me like they were completely happy, the chickens, and they were running around. And they had like little chicken houses for them, and assumed to me like
And, and I'm not talking about chickens. I'm talking about larger animals.
Livestock.
Livestock, yes.
Livestock.
But there's some, some cities I saw where they, because I looked over this, and they were saying miniature livestock was okay. Like
On any size lot, or on any size lot?
Um, I think that they had to have, well, it was different for each city, and my computer unfortunately shut down.
That's all right.
They needed to have a quarter of an acre. Other times, they didn't. It was like, more like what Holly was saying, where they had it, for each type of animal, there was a certain amount of area that they needed to have. Which I think is probably better, because each animal probably requires a different amount of area.
But then it's like, do you have to count up the animals, the number of animals, and take it times 200 square feet, and then figure out? I was just trying to make it simple.
Well, they also, some of them had a cap on how many animals you could have on there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, like altogether, and it, and it, some of the times, they included cats and dogs with your livestock and fowl. But there was always different ways to do it.
Yeah, and we're not, yeah.
Oh. Teresa, I just found a site, and it's called urban, urbanaglaw.org.
Okay.
And it talks about who governs food-producing animals, and what types of local law govern it, zoning laws, animal welfare laws, public health laws, and nuisance laws. And they get into the zoning, which we've talked about, um, that has to do with the maximum number of animals, and that includes everything. Dogs, cats, chickens, you know, guinea pigs, the whole thing. And then there's a whole section on animal welfare, um, you know, how they're being treated. Uh, nuisance laws fall into it, too. Who regulates it? So do you have a pen? It's, uh, urbanaglaw.org, animals-dash-and-lifestocks.
Yeah, that goes down a whole different road than we've been on, though. It kind of sends us back to the drawing board if we
Well, it's also talked about, I found my city ordinance. How do I change them? You know, I mean, so I mean, it does have, in reference to city ordinance, so.
I know, but do you guys want to start over from the beginning and try to figure out what the maximum number of animals is? Or, okay.
We already went there. We're not going to say how many dogs and cats and all that.
Right, right.
And we said last week that, um, we were basing this on are the animals being taken care of or not? And that it went to the point of if there was a question about it, that we would ask someone who was an expert in their area to come in and say, is the animal being cared for in an appropriate manner?
Okay.
Quarantary appropriate.
All right. So instead of, instead referring to B in 6.1.25, refer, um, to C, livestock shall be purchased, scolded, and housed. Uh, no, let's see. Something about the Arizona Department of Agriculture.
I think you were looking
Can I interrupt you for a sec, Teresa?
Yeah, yeah.
I found another one from Teller County, wherever that is, and it gives you size. Where a horse cannot be on anything less than an acre, um, and they, they give specific sizes to, um, domestic hoof livestock and, um, everything.
Yeah, so do we want to do that, where you have to go out and like count them up and measure the uh, area and divide it by the number of pets and?
I don't want to personally. I think most people, a lot of people that were most vocal that I heard, they don't want to have ordinances. But I understand that there's got to be some, to at least protect the animals and prevent them being a nuisance to their neighbors. I do understand that, and I, I think, you know, we have a nuisance law already, and I think it sounds pretty good. And if we just keep it simple and have like, uh, you have the expert come in. If, if some neighbors are unhappy with it, and, and see the animals, like, they think it's not being taken care of well or something like that, that, um, an expert could come in and evaluate the situation.
So like the state veterinarian?
Um, I, didn't we say there was, um, animal inspection?
There is, uh, yeah, that's Arizona Department of Agriculture, but they're mostly concerned with the purch- the purchase and selling, from what I could figure out.
How about, um, like a jury of your peers? Like, find, like, two other people that are keeping, like, if it's about chickens, find two other people that are having chick, that are taking care of chickens and, or two or three, and have them come evaluate the situation. So it can
But it's in their own best interest to be able to keep chickens themselves.
Yeah, but, um, if, if, the livestock people that really care about their animals, they're not, they'll, if that animal is being tortured or something, they're going to probably say something. You know, people that
Yeah.
livestock seriously, they're not going to be very, they're, they're really careful with their animals, and they'll be very upset if someone's not taking care of them.
And then, yeah.
Sounds like a difficult enforcement, a difficult, who's going to say what to people?
Really hard. So do we, we don't want to limit the size of the
That's not clear cut at all.
Yeah. Do we not want to limit area then? We'll just take that out?
Back to an original question, several minutes ago about swine.
I can't hear Holly.
I do want to limit swine. I don't want swine in city limits. I don't want swine in city limits. I want to make sure that we have that in the question.
Why do you have swine? I'm just curious, because I don't know.
Well, there's a major problem with swine.
Huh?
Um, yeah, they, they carry parasites big time, and they get in your soil and don't ever get out.
But they can, someone could have a pot-bellied pig, right, for a pet?
I, I raise pigs. I raise pot bellies. And they're big harbingers of, um, roundworms. And you don't, ascaris and everything else, which can cross-contaminate the human being. Um, they're nasty and they stink, you know, I mean, as stated before, there are bad
So we'll take that, so we can remove that from the definition of livestock then?
I think we should go back to where it was before, no swine allowed.
I have a neighbor who has a pot-bellied pig, and they seem very happy, like, there's no problems. It doesn't bother me. And I would feel like a terrible person to take away his pot-bellied pig. That's his pet. I, I don't, I don't think that that should, that should happen. I think people, if they want it, as long as, you know, it's a pet, and you're not having like 20 of them, and you're not raising them, but a pot-bellied pig for a pet, I mean, people do that, if you're taking care of it.
I don't agree with having swine.
Well, the thing about pot-bellied pigs, that I, your neighbors may be doing all of this, I don't know, but they have specific care. They need hooves trimmed, they have eye issues, and a lot of times, people get them because they're cute pets, and they have, and they, and they feed them, and they think they're taking really good care of them. They aren't. Plus, pigs themselves usually don't smell. It's the pig feces that stinks to high heavens.
Yeah, I don't even notice it, you know, so I don't think it smells. I live right next door, so I think they're doing fine.
There is a reason almost every municipality has laws against swine. It's because they smell, and they're problematic for that reason.
Yeah, I found somewhere they allowed it for, um, a pet, like, they just added it back in. I think it was Seattle. I can't remember. I was looking at a bunch of different ones, but they're, they're allowed for, definitely some of them.
And most of those are living inside the house. They don't live out in the yard.
I don't know if he lets his inside or out, but they're, the back, they are.
So, so do we, do we want to come up with some square footage requirement or?
I have some, I have some square footage requirement, if you guys want to hear it.
Yes.
Um, um, this one that, that was that same one from wherever the heck I just told you it was from. It said, um, number of domestic small livestock, poultry, and fowl standards. None is allowed if the lot is smaller than two acres. This is an extreme one. Um, lots from 1.1 to 2 acres, the maximum number of poultry is 10, that's poultry, fowl, rabbit. Uh, so if you have 1.1 to 2 acres, that's all you can have. So this is a, I mean, an extreme, but it's maybe something to think about. Yeah, but they have to be, they do have to be hutch. They can't be running loose. Uh, they have to be in a fowl enclosure. Um, they have to be no closer than, um, 50 feet from your property line, which again, we'd have to look at that, because some people's yards aren't that big.
Right.
That does sound like urban farming, if you have that much, you know, that, that sounds more like suburban.
Well, I'll give you an example. My parents live one, two, three houses down from one of the local, uh, urban, in-town farmers who has chickens, ducks, and geese, and you can smell it when the wind changes that far away. And it is not appealing.
Yeah, that's the unsanitary part. I think that, like, probably that it needs to be cleaned.
So what do we want to do about area? Just not address it right now?
So that would mean people could have whatever they wanted on whatever size lot, if we don't address it.
Well, a person's probably would not be a good idea, like you were saying, like, things that actually need to have, um, ruined, like a giant beast, like, that's like a, they weigh like, what, half a ton, a ton? And they need to move about, like, if you, you should at least have a, some kind of restriction.
What are you talking about?
Horses. You know, like, large, like, we can't, like, I think small, you know, or like, whatever, small herding animals, like, that's okay. But once you start getting into like full-size, like giant cows and horses, you need to have like a larger lot. You just have to. Like, I can see for the smaller ones that they could probably take good care of chickens and rabbits and ducks and, um, perhaps even goats. I don't know. You know, on a smaller piece of land. But when you start getting into full-size animals like cows and horses, they, they've got to have a, a bigger area. You can't keep a cow in a little 20 by 20 area.
What about our discussion last week about the 300-pound limit?
Yeah, I was just looking about animal area per pound, if that was, uh,
Know what I'm saying, is no area over 300.
Pound limit, yeah.
Yeah, you said, okay. And that was from another, another towns thing, um, where they, they had a limit like that. But a limit of 300 pounds definitely excludes equine animals, uh, normal-sized cows, you know, things like that.
Swine, because they're over 300. Like, full-size pigs, that would, that would
Swine should not be in the city ordinance. No, I'll just keep saying that.
Yeah, I think the pot-bellied pigs, I, I don't want to
Sorry, I'll just keep saying it.
I have to raise them. It's like, yeah.
I love raising
I think one of the
but not in an urban environment. They're wonderful animals. They have a place in farm areas, but not where you're anywhere near anybody else. So do we want to do more research then, Teresa, on, on, are we going with the size of the lot? Are we going with the size of the animal? We sound like we're kind of at a deadlock here on this issue as well.
I don't, I don't know that we're deadlocked. I think we just haven't come up with something. Like, if it was, maybe it's 300 square feet per, uh, unit of livestock?
Right.
Something like that. Like, if we pick a middle of the road and then say it's three, you need to have 300 square per, per unit of livestock. you need to have 300 square per, per unit of livestock.
Then we need to go out and do some more research and find out what are the accurate amounts that we have. Sorry, this is not something that we could just sit here and go, I think it's this amount. We really need, I mean, there's multiple major universities publishing it.
Yeah. So it just gets really complicated then. Because then it's like, well, if you have a goat, I have to come in and measure and make sure you have 200 square feet. But if you have a mule, I have to come in and measure and make sure you have 400 square feet, where it's like the lot size was a little bit more, we can go to the parcel map and see what size your lot is. And then we can know whether or not you have a lot that will support livestock. Kind of like the acre thing, you know, it's, could we just like have a size?
Like I think for full-size, like, you know, horses and cows and probably, you know, an acre or more, you're going to have to, you have to have like at least a half an acre, right?
More than a half an acre.
So an acre for large ones, and then the other ones, I mean, I, I think if, as long as it, it looks like the animal's healthy and well taken care of. And I mean, you can tell if an animal is stressed out or it doesn't have shelter or if it's sick. You can see that.
Can you see if it's getting enough exercise and it's got enough room? I, I think sometimes you don't see those kinds of things.
Yeah. I mean, the pictures of hoofed animals not being taken care of are horrendous. With their poor little hooves that curve all the way around and they're crippled because of it. Most people don't know how to shoe, you know, that takes a furrier.
Right.
And just because I like my little hoofed animal doesn't mean I know how to take care of it.
People don't take care of dogs or cats too, though, you know? So if you have animals, that's, that's part of the neglect. We already have an ordinance for that one.
It's a totally different thing. For instance, pigs, the hooves, what, what was just said was exactly right. They curve up and very few people know how to properly trim a pot-bellied pig's hooves. And it takes special people to know how, farriers can do it, but there's actually people, the Big Rescue will tell you, they send people out to do that. So there's specific needs with livestock that people may think they're taking good care of them, but they don't know how to do that. And they don't have access to the people to help them. Exactly.
Hopefully we can create a network so that they can have the, the help that they need and the education, information that they need to take care of them.
That's beyond the scope of what we're working with now.
Yeah, we just need something simple that a animal control officer can go out and take a look at.
Yep.
Or actually prevents the need for an animal control officer to have to go out and take a look at it.
Yeah.
I, I'm for a simple too. Like if you're going to have like a, anything that's like a full-size, like a giraffe, a zebra. No, I'm just, uh, you know, cattle or horses, like maybe an acre or more and like small, like herd animals and fowl, you can keep there as long as they meet the, the, that they're, they're kept safely. They're nourished and then we're going to have to, whoever the new ACO is is going to need to learn how to recognize different things for a year. So do a little research on it.
So can we say, can we say over 500 pounds needs an acre and under 500 pounds?
Needs to have the proper containment and.
Proper care, okay.
Yeah, that be recommended for that type of species.
And does proper care, is proper care give a size of the land? That's my whole issue with this, is like.
Right, no.
Saying it's great to have little goats in small lots, and I don't believe that. I think it's wrong.
Yeah. It's saying like, two to four goats per acre, which would be one goat on a city lot.
So I guess my next question is, have you ever smelled a goat?
Exactly.
Um, goats are very murky animals. And you can keep your pen nice and tidy.
Male goats.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Females are often, have next to no smell whatsoever, though.
Yeah.
And then rabbits, you know, like.
It's male goats that have a strong smell.
If we're going to have urban farming, people have to be a little bit more relaxed about some of the odors and some of the sounds. It's just going to have to happen.
Excuse me?
But does that mean everybody in Bisbee wants urban farming?
No.
That would be the next question. No.
Yeah, not everybody wants that next door. We have somebody doing that in San Jose on a subdivision lot right now and the neighbors are not happy.
Right. What I don't understand is why. Oh, sorry.
Wouldn't that, can't, don't we have ordinances right now that can protect those neighbors with the noise ordinance? And also the.
Or the smell?
Can't that be taken care of?
Well, then we go to court and she's charged and then she appeals and the animals stay while it's under appeal.
Well, isn't there, don't we, okay, we were going to do mediation, right? And then there was going to be fines? Like, why is that?
So are we going to, yeah, well, they could mediate at a cost not to exceed the fine. Um, but if the mediation doesn't remediate the problem, then they still face the fine.
Right.
Right.
Uh huh. So that won't help?
Not in this woman's case, no. I mean, essentially, um, she's now claiming that she's being terrorized by the neighborhood.
Okay.
Well, she's probably the one terrorizing the neighborhood.
Exactly. So, you know, it's just.
We're looking at, so you could probably have like, like just a few chickens. If you do just a terrible job with them, it's going to be a nuisance, right? Even if you have, say you can have six chickens, because I think Seattle says you can have six chickens. But if you don't, if you're not doing a good job, it's, it's going to terrorize neighbors. So let's just, let's work this one out. How can we make this work? Because it, it sounds like you're, 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 you get to a dead end. Can the animals be taken away?
Well, we don't have any right to go under her property at this point.
But the ACO or someone trained in capturing whatever ducks and stuff?
Well, first, first she has to be found guilty.
Right.
Yeah.
Is she guilty?
The one that's under is problem people, because someone who's doing a good job with this, it shouldn't be such a problem for their neighbors, right?
Right.
But if, just like my street, we got someone that, you know, apparently is more of an exception to the rule. And just like, it sounds like you got one with livestock, but we can't punish all the people that are doing a good job, like the streets where they are doing a good job with their feral cats because of one person or, you know, punish everyone about chickens just because of one person.
Exactly.
Right.
One of the things I don't understand is, um, why these certain people that want to have these animals haven't made a move to do what they did like with the community garden? Why don't they come up with a community livestock arena somewhere? Then they could have their.
It's a good idea. I like that.
Then your career isn't having to deal with it and, I don't know.
I think that's a great idea.
Try to, but I think it goes back to what Leslie was saying, is the folks who currently have livestock in Old Bisbee or around town are like, you know, my, I have a horse. Everybody loves my horse. Why are you going to make me get rid of my horse? You know, I have mules. I've always had mules. Mules make it Old Bisbee.
I think then if we get it, get into the neighborhood thing, and if the, if the neighbors are cool with it and it's not causing them a problem, I don't see why they can't do it personally. As long as the animal looks like it's taken care of.
But then you need teeth for the neighborhoods where if they're not cool with it.
So I, I think that we have sanitation and nuisance laws that can cover that and that we just have to enforce them.
And then have no square footage requirements.
I think, yeah, I think we should, you know, I, I think personally people are, a lot of people in Bisbee are free spirits and they really feel like they don't want to be a bedroom community or like a retirement community with, they want to have the freedom to, to do these things. And I personally think that they should. And if it's a problem for the neighbors, then we, we're, we've got the noise and the sanitation ones, those ordinances that'll cover down on them. And then if, you know, if you, and we also have the, the animal neglect. And those animals, I think we already have it covered with those, between those three things.
Okay.
And if we don't, if we just leave it alone, I think it's probably better. Myself, that's, I, I think that a lot of people in Bisbee are like that and they want to have that kind of, that freedom. And we'll, we would be taking it away because of our like personal preferences or.
So what's the thought? About that?
I struggle a little bit because I'm a big supporter of people who are raising small stock, especially during these times. I know that my friends who have chickens and small stock fared a lot better during the first days of pandemic when there were food, there wasn't a lot of food. You couldn't get eggs a lot of times. Uh, and they, that was fine. Where I, where I'm troubled is by large livestock in town. Not having a square.
Instead of livestock, maybe we should define small stock?
Sounds good to me, like.
Yeah, perhaps, some, some way either by the size of the animal or something like that.
Okay.
Because I, I agree with what Leslie's saying about, we really don't need a lot of regulation about chickens, that I think that, I, I might be wrong though, according to, to whoever has the neighbor who has the terrible duck and goose problem. Because again, different animals have a different level of stench with their manure, to be quite frank. And so, um, poultry, large amounts of poultry is a very smelly situation. Goes right up there. It's not as bad as swine, because you can wash it off, unlike swine manure. Um, but, um, I, I do, I do agree with Leslie on the, yeah, that we should be able to have some livestock. Without huge requirements.
One of the problems with, uh, people that do have these animals and are living with them, and it's something that really is a main problem, is that they become desensitized to smell. And they don't realize it stinks. And their attitude is, it doesn't stink. Why are you upset? Well, your, your nasal cavity become fatigued and you don't understand that. And the majority of the people don't know how to properly take care of their livestock. But, I mean, I don't want to see people have to get rid of their chickens either, you know, eat the ducks. But I can, I can empathize with the neighbor. They've got, a neighbor who's got chickens and ducks running around the yard loose. And, you know, making crowing in the morning, you know, quacking 24/7, so.
Right.
Roosters and geese are, are much, much louder than, um, uh, poultry, female poultry. So that's why almost all municipalities ban roosters, no roosters at all. And that livestock should actually contained, not running loose. It's not supposed to be running loose.
I saw that a, a lot of them did ban roosters. There were some that would allow it, but it would only be one. And they had to have a, and then for that, then they either, they usually had some kind of square footage that you had to meet on that one. But then we're going to, again, I think we can not specify, keep it very generalized and we have the nuisance, the noise, we have the, the animal care one, you know, we have, I think that it'll, it'll, if it's too loud and the neighbors are complaining, it's a noise ordinance. It's, if it's too smelly, that's a, do we, do we still have the smelly thing in there about it being smelly?
Well, there, it does say smell, yes. It's still in there.
Then we got that, you know, then I think that's enough. Your neighbors are not happy with the way that stinks. You're going to have, you have 15 days to fix it. And if it's not fixed, then, um, I think that, that, you know, that they're going to probably risk losing their animals if they don't take care of it.
Right. So do we, so do we want to go with small stock instead of livestock?
What does small stock mean then?
We'll have to define it.
Does that cover?
Yeah. Uh, is it under 500 pounds?
I think that's good. That gives wiggle room.
Calm down, calm down.
Unless you have an acre or more. And then you could have a cow or a horse or a donkey or, I mean, a donkey.
Yeah, I, boy, we're going to be, well, yeah, there are some acre lots, but actually, see, we don't do limit, we don't have agricultural zoning. It's not like, oh, this is the only place you can have horses or. Um, so.
An acre should be pretty good though for a horse, right?
What is?
Yeah.
In my opinion, it should be a lot more than an acre, but.
So anything over 500 pounds requires an acre and anything under 500 pounds is considered small stock?
So a pig can be 300 pounds. What are we going to do about that?
What can be 300 pounds?
Specifically.
Yes.
We need to specifically not have pigs.
Is there any, is there anyone here, I mean, does anyone know anyone in Bisbee that has hogs?
Uh, I did.
A pot-bellied pig, that's it. I, that's all I know of.
That's still a pig.
Still swine, yeah. Okay, what do you want to do from here at 7:32?
I'm tired.
Okay.
I think we made some progress on the livestock. Um, you know, I, I understand the feral cat thing is contentious. I'm not sure. Did we make progress on that? I just want to know if we need to revisit it.
We just, we took out the, we've took out feeding feral animals. We just eliminated it.
I, I think I'm good with that.
Okay. And, and this may not be the time, you know, the ordinance where we address feral cats or colony cats or whatever at this time.
Like, let it be a neighborhood thing. Like if people want to do something like that, you know, go ahead and do it, but let's not institute it and make it an ordinance. Again, I think we're, and if, like, say it's, it's me and I'm unhappy with the TNR program, how it's being run, then, um, you know, I would like, you know, I don't want to go to the animal shelter where they're pushing TNR. You know, I would like some kind of option. I don't know what it is, but if some people could come up, problem solve that and come up with something, I would appreciate it. I, I, for me, I thought maybe if people were accountable that way, you know, they're like, that's my TNR cats. I'm like, okay, well then fix their eyes. They're, they're all gummy and gooey. Or they're, they're just like pooping all over my front yard. Like, you got to do something about that.
Yeah. Okay.
That's probably where I'm stuck at with it.
Yeah. So do you want to take a break for a couple weeks and come back to this?
Sounds good to me.
Yes.
The September, September 14th?
That sounds good.
I didn't get an email. I was getting on the police and fire. That's why I couldn't get on. And I went back and emailed. I never got the link. So I got locked out.
Oh, I have a problem too.
Yeah. You know what, Will? I, I even had trouble this time, so I don't know if it's the app or what, but we'll, we'll get it straightened out for next time.
Meeting the parking lot with Matt.
I'm in a, I'm in a parking lot too, so.
Okay. Okay, maybe September 14th?
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right. Bye-bye.
Thank you so much.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.